Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Parsonsville Planning Board Monthly Meeting. This is September the 21st at 6:00 PM. So we call the meeting to order and we'll go right down to our agenda to make sure we keep everything orderly. Since we've called a meeting to order, we'll go down to item number two since we have a forum here. And item number two, I put it at the top of the agenda because if we needed to get this out of the way before we did anything else, and then whoever's nominated for the chair, vice chair, and we vote on our secretary's position, then we'll fall right into the public hearings, public hearing number one and two. Item number two, under A, nominate and elect a chair for the planning board of Parsonsville. Do I have any nominations for chairman?
I nominate Saban Beckwith for the chair.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of Saban Beckwith as a new chair of the planning board for this next fiscal year, please show a right hand. Unanimous. Paul, right now you can't vote.
All right, I won't do that.
You're all part of, you can be part of the conversation, ask questions or comments, but unless you're moved up from an alternate position to a field position, if someone's not here, you can't vote.
Gotcha.
I want you to know that upfront, okay. All right, nominate, under item B, nominate and elect the vice chair. Do I have a nomination for a vice chair?
Are we okay with him?
I think so.
I nominate Andy Yell.
Andy Yell, and do I have a second for Andy Yell? Roger seconds it. All in favor, show of right hands, unanimous. Okay, real quickly, we need to vote on our secretary's position for another year effective today. Do I have a nomination on our present secretary, Desiree Lyle, to continue in her position as our secretary for another calendar year?
So moved.
So moved by Aaron, second. By Saban. All in favor, show of hands, unanimous.
Oh, shut.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to turn over the chairmanship to Saban, and he will take us through the meeting.
Do you want to finish your final meeting?
Huh?
Do you want to finish your final meeting?
No.
He said that we could pass.
I'll help you, I'll provide any help, okay?
Why don't they like you?
Because they wanted me to stay, but...
That's too far. All right, at this time, at...
We know who he is.
I need to be saluted, folks. I see this phone number, of course. Is that his?
I think so.
Thank you. So, so six, we're going to open for our public meeting. Public hearing, which is item number three, and public hearing number one, zoning change for single property, William and Eileen Harmon, map 001, lot 029, landlot. Support needed to send back to Selectman to be on town, meaning warrant. Do you guys have any notes from the site walk?
Yep, typed them up and left them sitting on my desktop on my computer. Yeah, for both of them. But I had some discussion around concerns about the property being converted to residential as all budding properties are light industrial. So, as a board, we discussed, discussed that concern, walked the property lines.
Line.
Well, walked to the corners, to the, to the east, noticed that the property that's zone light industrial is a residential property, and then the property to the west is a vacant, it's wooden lot. Yeah, there's not anything obviously built on the property at this point, so there wasn't a lot to view.
Any other board members at the site walk have any input? Saban, see if I got any comments. Any public comment?
Us?
No.
Nobody else?
Do you have to be a Parsonsville resident?
Yes, you do, but if you...
We can vote to allow you to speak. Anyone want to give a motion to allow these folks to...
I'll make a motion that we allow non-residents to speak at this public hearing, number one.
One second. So nominate, motion by Alan, seconded by Roger, all in favor, passed.
Okay, I just, I'm here tonight because in case you had any questions after the site walk, because I wasn't sure if you had received my email with the information as far as the setbacks and the location of the proposed house, if we get the change, and I also have it drawn on the tax map, just to again give you a visual because I know you didn't walk through to see all the flags and stuff.
Yes.
So I didn't know if...
It's not in their package, it's not right in front of them, but they did get email right after I sent it, right after you sent it to me.
I forwarded it out. We didn't see it, it's not right in front of them. Does anybody have a quick, I have coffee if anybody wants...
Alan? Point of interest from the board member is, this does not affect any way, shape, or form, the planning board make a recommendation or non-recommendation of changing this, so we don't have to have that at the board at this time.
We're voting to send it back to the board.
We're just voting on the change, the zoning change, is all we're voting on.
So let's vote. So does anyone have a...
Well, this is just the public meeting part of it.
Yeah, yeah, so we can skip the vote for later.
See if there's any other comments.
Any other additional comments from anyone?
Motion to close the public hearing for zoning change for single property, William and Eileen Harmon.
Second?
Second.
A vote. Pass. All right, so we'll open public hearing number two, site plan review for Karen Flannery and Robert...
Spiel.
Thank you. Map U14, lot 001, 177 Randall Lake Road, current proposed use seasonal camp, a bathroom and addition with utilities. All right. Can we get some feedback on the site walk from anyone?
So, review the site, property, as described on the map, it's being, the additions being added to the back, it's going to be moving the bathroom from currently inside the camp into the addition as well as adding a mudroom, entryway into the rear of the camp. Saw the area where the antiquated wastewater system is.
Sesspool.
It's listed as a cesspool, but it's, it's just an old system, it's, it's, it's the way they used to do systems with bricks and, and, you know, it was, it was an outhouse probably before that, and what they do is they just basically took the system that was underneath the outhouse and into the house. Yeah. The property does not have running water, so it's, it's all hand, hand pumped, so that's why that system is, is permissible. Trying to think what else, up there is the water with bubble. I mean, at its closest point, the property, it's like three or four feet off the water.
The house itself.
The house, the camp itself, and then...
The cesspool is like 40 feet or whatever, I believe.
Yeah, at the most, yeah, the most, it's under 40 feet, you're right. Mr. Chairman, we ought to ask the CEO about the septic system, and if anything has to be done to it, or is, can it stay in place as is until something happens?
Jesse, is that currently...
There is a section for primitive systems, and that will fall under primitive systems, they're not adding a bedroom, so we wouldn't have to have a septic design for that. But we wanted to check it, actually, with a soils engineer at least.
I have a question for the landowner. Are you planning on getting running water at some point soon, or...
We have running water.
I mean, actual running water into the house and stuff?
We have that.
Oh, okay.
It's just in the seasonal camp.
Okay.
So after, you know...
Well, I was under the understanding it was just that little pitcher pump thing outside.
That's why, yeah.
Also, just a point of clarification, I don't believe there was an outhouse there. I think it was constructed intentionally as...
To be what it is.
It's a, it's a brick septic system.
Right.
Also, I did take samples of the water of the pond, and the outfall where the butter's property is, was not detected, so there was no...
You discovered what, pathogens?
Yes, coliform, and it was none detected at the outfall where their, their property and...
Which of that was that?
The point...
Which of that is property?
I'm sorry?
Meehan.
Meehan, yeah. Joy Colacott and Michael Meehan. So, and also, we also tested our water, and it was none detected also. And so the pond is, is really not as, as Ms. Colacott characterized it, it is actually pretty clean.
Alan? Mr. Chairman, we have a letter that was sent to all of us, I don't know if you all have it or not, from this Joy Colacott, and her request was that we read this into the record, either one of the board members or our secretary. So, this got some information, I've looked this up too. So there is on Shoreland District, there are some things that she wrote up in here that relates also DEP 1000, which, it's in DEP 1000, plus, yeah, plus, it's in the book of State of Main Subsurface Wastewater Disposal Rule, Chapter 241. That's what she's based everything on, she wrote in this letter. And I looked that up, and it's there also. So there are some issues that she's bringing to us as a planning board that we need to be well aware of. Did anyone read your letter from her?
I didn't. Do we want to do that now or during correspondence?
We probably, often need to do it, it's a public hearing, so everybody in the public needs to hear this, I think, in my opinion. So someone needs to read this into the record in the public hearing.
Desiree, do you want to read the letter first?
All right. Speaking for Ms. Calacott, my name is Drake Calacott, my husband and I own the abiding property to the east, and this includes shoreline along the complete length of the dam. We also own substantial shoreline and other property on north and west sides of the lake, and a small lot on southern shore, as well as property downstream. Our concern with this project is that the property has no septic system. What is labeled as a sewer on the resubmitted plan is just a cesspit which was installed in the 1960s when these camps were built and would never be permissible today, so all sewage disposal just seeps into the soil, contaminating the groundwater. It is for all intents and purposes an outhouse on the very shore of the lake. This camp and the cesspit are just a few feet from the shore of the lake, and the terrain slopes towards the water. Has the site been evaluated for depth of groundwater? It is so close to the lake that groundwater cannot be very deep. There are also wells nearby and downstream. We are very concerned about the environmental impact of this antiquated system, basically a wooden box in the ground that is now over 60 years old. We are concerned about water quality of the lake itself and the intended consequences to wetlands and downstream properties. This situation is a potentially serious health hazard for wildlife residents and anyone who recreates in the lake. We believe that permission to build a new modern bathroom addition should also require the installation of an updated, modern-designed sewage disposal system. Anything less than that is just allowing inevitable pollution, inevitable pollution, and risk of human exposure to bacteria and associated pathogens and disease transmission. Our lakes and streams are precious resources. We now understand the consequences, consequences of systems that were allowed 60-plus years ago, and many lakes in Maine are now dealing with the negative impact. Randall Lake is a small, shallow lake with a fragile aquatic ecosystem. This should be a great concern to anyone who uses the lakes or resides downstream. We request that the planning board give serious consideration to the concern we have raised. We also ask the board to comment on compliance with the following sections of State of Main Subsurface Wastewater Disposal Rules, Chapter 241, Section 2E1, Existing Systems, A, Wastewater Flow, and B, System Status, Section 9, 5, A, B, and C. In the event an expanded subsurface wastewater disposal system is not required, no person may expand a structure until documents are reported in registry of deeds stating that in the event of malfunction of the disposal system, it can be replaced and enlarged to comply with all rules and should include the design of such system. This must take place before any building begins.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Just looking at our other emails.
As I looked this up, and I understand what Section 9, 5, A, B, and C says, "In the event an expanded subsurface wastewater disposal system is not required," I think by the CEO it's not required, is that correct?
Not, not.
Not, not required now, at this time. "No person may expand a structure," that's what we're going to do, is expand their structure, "until documents are recorded in the registry of deeds stating that in the event, that in the event of a malfunction," that's all it says, "of the disposal system, it can be replaced and enlarged to comply with all rules and should include the design of such system." This must take place first before any building design begins. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, all I would say then, Mr. Chairman, is, we got to make sure, if we approve this, it'd be on conditions.
Correct.
Conditions is, they would have to have a, a complete design system that falls under a chapter, a State of Main Subsurface Wastewater Disposal Rule, Chapter 241, have it done, and at the registry of deeds in case there's a malfunction in their existing property.
Correct.
So, I wanted everybody to hear that in the public hearing.
I have a question.
Can you state your name first?
Oh, sure, my name's John Marble, and my question is just in general, does the board know if subsurface wastewater disposal rules, Chapter 241, actually apply? Is there something prior, I mean, I'm going to say that this is what Section 9 probably reads, but is it relevant?
It's in our ordinance, yes, it's in our ordinance, in the book that we go by, we have a section in there, page 60, oh, Mr. Chairman.
60, no. I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
Page 61, if you go to page 61 in our ordinance book, Septic Waste Disposal. Paragraph 11, "All subsurface sewage disposal systems shall be installed in conformance with the State of Main Subsurface Wastewater Disposal Rules and the following." So it's stated in our book that we go by, that we have to follow these rules. It's also stated in DEP Chapter 1000, it's in there too, so we have three references to this. The State of Main Disposal, Chapter 241, DEP Department of Environmental Protection, Chapter 1000, and then it's also referred to in our ordinance book.
One of the things you said there, if you could clarify, it's, and I'm just going to paraphrase, it sounded like you said, "If you put in a system..."
Right, it does.
"...if the system exists," that's what I'm watching.
If the system exists now, and it's functional, as long as it's functional, they're okay. If something ever happens, and they have to replace it, it's got to be upgraded.
So we want an updated plan...
You're right.
...as to where that soil, where, where that field is going to go...
Gotcha.
...and how far away from the water it's going to be, so it's ready to go in case of a disaster.
That's why I emphasize these three words. In the, I mean, in the event of a malfunction, if it fails, that's the only time they have to do it.
Is there a place on the property that would move the 100-foot setback?
Across the street.
Yeah, across the street, they'd have to go all the way across, because they own the property across the street.
Can I speak, there's a landowner, it's interesting to me because there's another camp further down that did have recently had their septic redone within this similar-sized site.
That can be done.
Okay, so whether...
Yeah, it all depends on the soil guy that shows up over there, where he can design it, and where the soil is suitable for a system. And you can get various structures, state, put on smaller lots, a working system.
Right.
So if the soil guy comes out there and finds a suitable location on the property right there, then you do it that way. If you have access to property that's, that can meet setbacks, he's going to go there. He's going to try to meet the setbacks as much as he can.
Right.
And that's up, that's between you guys and your soils engineer.
Okay.
Right.
And then, okay.
Thank you, Jesse.
Anyone else's comments on this particular item from the public hearing? Jesse, my, go ahead. Go ahead. Just to clarify, because I did some history on Randall Lake.
Yep.
I would concur that there was never an outhouse. There are several properties on that that were built by Sky Haven Inc., which I'm going to call a real estate land holding company, that those properties were rented long, for a couple of years before they were sold.
Okay.
They're all very similar, so I, I'm just going to put in my two cents that I doubt that there was ever an outhouse on that, I mean, other than prox construction. Probably all using the similar old septic style.
She may be referring to our camp as the outhouse.
You guys are having them over for dinner. So Jesse, on here it says that they can't, you, I thought you said that they, this could be done on their property, but it would have to be across the street because...
It all depends on the soil type.
Even though it says on here the minimum setback distance from water bodies cannot be reduced even by variance?
I've seen that in our book.
Yep, it can be, of the state standard, the minimum setback requirement from the Great Pond or...
Right, just like the old end things?
But it says in our book here, if you read the book, if you read our book...
I can go get it.
No, right here, I'm just saying our book. It says here, item number C.
Yep, that came right out of Chapter 1000.
The maximum setback for new, new subsurface sewage disposal system excluding field extensions and not less, not less than 100 feet from the normal hot water line up at perennial water body. The minimum setback distance from water bodies for new subsurface disposal systems may not be reduced by variance.
Okay, so it goes through a state variance to get it reduced.
But, says it can't be.
They're the one of them. They can be replacing, not putting a new.
Yeah, it's not a new system, it's a replacement system.
I don't need to hear from him. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, I just want to make sure we're giving proper clarification to these folks before we tell them to go have a septic design. All right, so there's just a little bit of ambiguity here...
Yep.
...with Section C, that's why I was looking for your clarification, Jesse. So you say the state regulations trump this particular section?
Right, so I mean, my setbacks, I can take right down to 70 feet on our, on our Great Pond or anything. If it's closer than 70 feet, it goes to the state for a replacement system.
All right, anyone have for additional comments for this public hearing?
These are our neighbors, by the way.
Thank you very much.
On the west side, not...
I assume they weren't the other neighbors.
You can just support us.
So, I will note that I too looked into this subsurface wastewater disposal rules, and the ones listed, specifically the Section 9 piece, it is, some of the piece listed here is kind of handpicked, so these, the three sections that are, that compose of A, B, and C on Section 5 are much larger than, than what's listed, than what's listed here. So the, must take place before any building begins, you, it's talking about, they don't want you to build over a proposed septic, so if their system malfunctions, they, we would need to have the design on file so that we knew where that would go, because if it's going to go within the footprint of the expansion, you can't build the expansion as is.
That can be a requirement to get the building through.
Yep.
The design on file?
That's what I was saying. Additionally, in Section, Section 9, Section 9A, 3C, expansions of a structure such as a porch, living room, or sunroom, which do not increase the design flow, are exempt from the requirements of this section.
I think, oh, if I, that's sort of what I was getting at, is there something in this larger thing, and I...
There are a couple of things.
It basically says that what's listed here is not applicable, and that was my concern, is that, as you said, it was kind of handpicked, is it really relevant? Now, are there other things that, you know, are they picking something that's written and factual written, but is it, does it apply?
I think the concerns are relevant, and I think that, you know, using this as an end-all, be-all, I think, you know, it calls, it calls out again in this, that for an expansion, that expansion of a structure, which is what this is, such as a porch, living room, or sunroom, this is a mudroom, we're not expanding a bathroom, right, we're not adding, adding a shower, we're not adding another utility, we're maintaining the current utilities, it's not expanding the, the design flow, and it's exempt from the requirements of this section. So, again, I appreciate the concerns of a, you know, the primitive system, but do we know additionally, do we know when this was installed? I'm assuming when the camp was built?
When the camp was built.
Which was 19...
I believe 1959.
So prior to 1974, okay.
Yes, moving, yeah.
That's a date that's called out quite frequently in the Subsurface Wastewater Disposal Rules, is the year 1974, so it's prior to that?
And can I just say, because we're changing, you know, removing existing bathrooms and putting one in there, one of the reasons to do that for us was to have a low-flow toilet, low-flow showerhead, like, use less, use less water. We're very cognizant of the, the issues being so close to the pond, and so one of the things was to put, use less and put less down.
Have you had any issues with the system in the past?
We had the, we had it inspected in 2017, between 2007 and 2017.
We purchased the property from my in-laws in 2007. In 2017, we had a septic company come in to basically clean out the septic system, and there's nothing in there.
Not like used?
No, it's a seasonal camp, we figure we, we use it at most about four weeks a year. And, yeah, and in the winter, you know, once the water is shut off, it, it is, you know, it is hand pumped.
Right.
That's the only source of water, or the pond itself.
You guys have a dishwasher? I'm sorry.
Thanks a lot.
All right, additional comments? Does anyone want to make a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Roger.
All in favor? Which will move us on to correspondence. And I guess we should make a note that we've covered the correspondence regarding public hearing number two. Has everyone reviewed the email from Lynn Sedlow? Any questions or comments regarding that? Any questions or comments regarding that? Sounds like Lynn is concerned about the approval that has already been made for the filling session. And feels that the planning board should report, planning board should refer to the town's comprehensive plan for guidance. Again, that's just a guidance we refer into our books, which is law as we refer to it. So we accept that piece. I believe that's all the correspondence we have.
Since you're on Allard, you have the Allard decision letter. And it's not really correspondence, but this later, I'm sure...
You're vocal.
You're vocal. I want to put the emphasis on vocal. They need to do extra, the updated paperwork at the sidewalk, answering your questions from the incomplete letter that we sent from last week, last month meeting.
Okay. So we, that will close correspondence. We need to review the minutes of August 17th, and they were in our email. Did everybody review them? Aaron?
Nope.
Did you see anything that we should y'all disagree about?
No. Looks good. Motion to accept the August 17th minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor? Yes, accepted. Andy, did he leave the LD 2003 discussion? He did. So this is under Old Business, item A. I believe it's the signature page showing our distaste for LD 2003 that a lot of other area boards and towns are signing. Are the selectmen going to sign something in regards to this? They already did?
Their signature at the top.
Perfect. So just planning board members? Can we have...
If you make a motion to sign it.
Do you guys, so do I have a motion to sign this document? What second?
We should sign the document.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A vote? All in favor? Passed, so we will sign this.
Sign it with a black pen, please. Oh, I did forget, backup under correspondence.
Yes.
Aaron was missing from the last meeting, and he did complete the missed meeting affidavit, admitting that he looked at everything, reviewed the video, read the minutes. So he is all set to participate and vote on the two items tonight.
Excellent.
Do you want Alan just to hold on to that after he's done? Move forward and sign it after?
Yeah, it looks like he...
Yeah. Looks like there's a little bit more than just an autograph.
All right, so as we're going to sign that as we go, let's move to item B, which is the zoning change for single property for William and Eileen Harmon. So we have the support from the board to send this back to the selectman for signature. Does anyone want to make a motion or a discussion?
Make sure that's black and that you're signing that.
Yeah, that's why I'm waiting. This is black, that's why I get it open.
Yeah, that's important. I bet.
That's blue.
Is it?
No, that's black. I'm wearing contacts, so I can't see anything.
Yeah. You wore my glasses, I can't see it.
So, Board, thoughts on item B?
I've read this on page 12 and 13 in our Land Order Use Book quite a bit in detail. And we can make a recommend, we only recommend, back to the board of selection. We can recommend favorably, or we can not recommend favorably. We can go either way on this. And all it does, it's still got to go to the town meeting. It just changes the number of people have to vote in favor of it at the town meetings, all it does. If we recommend it, it's like majority, simple majority. If not, it takes two-thirds of the town people, requires a supermajority if we do not recommend it at a special town meeting. So the more I read it, and like I was listening to Aaron, and where that property is, and it sits between, it's light industrial now, it sits between light industrial. There's no way to move that piece of property. If we approve it to residential, you're still going to have light industrial on one side, even though it's got a house on it, it's still light industrial. And you've got five properties over here in the gravel pit that are all light industrial. So I don't know what to do.
And from what I understand, if the, through conversations we've had, is those small lots that exist along Route 25, the, the future intent is for those to be residential lots down there.
That doesn't make any difference.
Well, but... Well, it certainly does.
No, what's present, what's out there now?
I understand.
Okay.
But they are on the others, their concerns are valid as well.
But, you know, the, the property beside it is currently light industrial.
Right.
But it, it's, it is a residence. Across the street is all residential. So it's certainly not out of character for the area, but...
Mr. Chairman, what we're going to, I'm kind of, I'm leaning kind of approving it too. I'll just tell you that. But when we do it, all we're doing is opening up a great big door for anybody else in any zone to want to change what's, where, what their property is presently at in that zone.
Right.
That's the only problem that I have with it. Do we, once we open the door, planning board, even if we're not on it, it's there, it's present, we've, we've said it, and we're going to, if over here in light industrial or industrial or wherever else is out there, and they want to go residential, or if they want to go opposite, they can do it. Once we open that door, that's, that's the only thing that bothers me.
But we're not really opening the door, we're making a recommendation to the...
We recommend it, it's probably going to pass. That's all I'm saying, thinking.
Right. Just like devil's advocate, that door's, that door's an avenue anyway.
Right, right.
For anyone, for any reason.
Right.
People will vote for it and that.
Right, yeah, they will.
Is it a requirement for them to come to us to get this recommendation?
I believe it's just part of the process.
How's it go here? An individual group request to the planning board and subsequent favorable majority of the board by written petition is one. The town selectman through a request to the planning board is two. That's item two. And then one, it says the planning board by favorable majority of the entire regular membership of the board. That means we can just vote it to send it forward too.
Right.
It's just us. It don't have to come from the board of selection. But they did it, and that's what we have to, there's three options we have here by
All we're really doing is reducing the...
Huh?
Where we, where our opinion will reduce the number of votes.
Yes, that's what it does. Or our opinion, once we send it back to the selectmen, they might just, I don't think they're going to do it, might just say, we ain't going to send this forward to those, to a special town meeting, you know they're going to. So it's, I don't know what to say about it. I...
I personally am leaning towards approval, because I think that avenue is already open anyway. But I understand our concern. So let's see, let's take a vote.
No, you mean like a motion.
Can we get a motion to move this forward to the planning board?
To the select...
To the planning board. We send it back to ourselves, that happens around here a lot.
Yeah, that happens.
I make a motion, we give them the support needed, and send it back to the select board.
As what? Recommended or non-recommended?
Recommended.
Okay.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Second by here. A vote? All in favor?
Yep. That's still tough.
Do you want to try to put together a letter, or do you want, does somebody want to come up with something? Do you want me to come up with something?
Desiree, would you like to prepare a letter for our, based on our vote? It was so silly. Is it done yet? Do you want us to sign it tonight?
No, I'll send it, I think I normally do, I'll try to put something together before Monday, so that they have it for their selectmen's meeting on Tuesday, hopefully, so that they can start the process to report on that.
Do you need me to come over and sign it? Or are you going to just sign it, the letter?
I will do like I have done for Alan. We'll, we'll figure it out after, after the meeting.
So you flip to our side from us.
Okay. Does that mean it could possibly...
That's up to the selectmen. Whether they want to call it a special town meeting and when, that's a little basket of cats.
Yeah, it's out of our hands. You've gotten our support, so now it's in the selectmen's hands. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to item C. Board, any input besides what we've discussed in the public meeting?
Slightly a review.
Do we have any other questions before we get into the site plan? Has everybody had a chance to review this?
Did.
Aaron? Do we have a motion to accept the site plan as complete?
Make a motion that the site plan is complete.
Do I have a second?
I'll select it.
Can we, all in favor? The site plan is approved as complete. Do we want to discuss this and the possible need for a septic design tonight?
Too much of a reading. Get under that stipulation. This engineering plan gets put in place.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask you a question?
You may.
Can you ask the CEO, do we need to make an approval based upon conditions, and what condition should that be?
Jesse?
So you guys want to put conditions on getting a building permit or an approval?
Approval.
Approval to be a soils engineer with a new septic design to go on file.
Is that what you're recommending?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I needed to hear.
Okay. That's what I was looking for. That's where I thought we were going.
Yes.
All right.
We're all on the same page.
Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion at this time we re...
At the registry.
At the registry, registry of deeds, yes. I'll make a motion at this time to approve the site plan for Mount U-14 Lot 001, 177 Randall Lake Road with condition. And the condition is that they contact a soils person and have them come and do a design on a new septic system based on the soils on your, on that property to be designed and put in place at the registry of deeds in case there's a problem in the future of a malfunction. Not needed at this time, but that needs to be at the registry of deeds, just in case. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's plan only, not actual...
That's it. That's plan only.
I second it.
I hope she got it all written down.
Eighty percent.
And he's got a second.
Yep, and it was seconded by Roger.
No, I, I understand, I'm just, can I just ask process? Like, so we get this done, then we have to come back here to the planning board?
No.
No, we just get...
Oh, we got to see his hand. Right, he's just going to see Jesse.
Reported. See Jesse about building permit.
Is it possible to do that concurrently? Because my concern is whether...
You're the soils engineer, you're going to go by this schedule.
Yeah.
I can give you a list of names of qualified individuals that design systems.
Okay.
And you can start reaching out to them, they're all pretty quick.
Okay. Okay.
All right, let's continue with this vote. So based on Alan's recommendation and...
Motion.
A motion and a second by Roger, can we get a vote to accept that? Approve. Any, all in favor? Based on those conditions. Desiree, you'll draft in the letter.
Okay. And once we, once it's registered at the registry, it will then get the building permit?
Yep, you're in Jesse's hands now.
Okay.
You're done.
If it's recorded, then have a copy.
And we'll be on to the next item, public questions. What's in this? Alan caught me off guard thinking I was going to have to do this tonight, and then maybe I'm getting off even.
You're doing good.
No.
You are.
My brain isn't there.
You're doing great.
No other questions? So all of you that came to speak or were in front of the board for an item, you're free to go. When you want, you don't have to sit here anymore. I've been there where you awkwardly don't know if it's okay to leave. You're dismissed. Thank you all for coming in.
Thanks for coming.
Feel free to come poop on our property.
But Jesse, really. All right, do we need a workshop, Roger? Do we have any major things in the pipeline that I'm not aware of?
Nothing, I don't think we do.
Ask the section, Jason, don't mind, don't see over there. Where'd he go?
It wouldn't hurt.
You got Jesse.
Jesse's got to come back in, John.
Jesse!
Because he hears him before we do for one moment.
Is Jesse coming down?
Yeah. There is?
There is.
How big?
Like a short one, a zoning and another site.
Well, that's what we need to know.
Something that we might need a workshop for prior.
Oh, you know what? He come, finally got his.
He's got it, he's got the survey, he's emailed it over to me. I'm going to go try to print it off.
It's forwarded, he's started reporting them.
You guys want to do that as a workshop, or do you want...
We've already seen it.
We've already seen it now.
We've already, oh, see, we're here now.
Congratulations.
Thanks. You now be talking a lot.
Now the Road Between the Pines Project, the Boltons, where we, they've been about a year now.
Close to it.
Close to a year. Waiting for that survey. So they've got...
Okay. This is the property that was, had the crack foundation?
Yeah.
Cracked foundation, caving-in foundation.
Yeah.
This could be demolished and rebuilt and same foot.
Yeah.
Top same foot. They wanted it further away.
Yeah.
Create a practical, get back to correspondence. They've got it, so they've got it, blue and red, existing and proposed.
So do I have a motion to not have a workshop?
Motion by...
Do I have to skip the workshop for October fail?
Second Alan's motion?
Second.
All in favor? And I apologize, we need to skip back to correspondence because we skipped over our letter. Wasn't that in our...
It's in our package.
The letter back to regarding the...
Propane, oil.
No, the zoning board.
Did I not see that somewhere?
No.
The letter we were returning to the zoning board regarding... The letter we were returning to the zoning board regarding the project that was remanded back to us.
That was lifestyle.
We, we didn't send anything to them.
We didn't see.
Just made a motion that we weren't.
Going to accept their letter?
Right.
Okay.
No action to be.
It was in the minutes, I apologize.
We.
I do do my homework outside here, so.
Andy made a motion to refuse to act on this decision letter at all unless he dealt with.
It was in the minutes, Desiree, I read them earlier.
Yeah, so, so that was it. We decided not to act at all on that.
Did we get a response to that?
It didn't, it didn't go anywhere.
No.
Because you guys didn't.
We just made the motion, didn't we?
We just made the motion, so it, nothing was sent to the ZDA to respond to, it was just you guys decided not to act on it, and I haven't heard anything since.
Any other things we want to discuss this evening?
Do you want me to still submit the minutes that are drafted for the sidewalks?
For their file, yeah. That'll be good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
I'd just want to congratulate you on your chairmanship.
Oh, thanks, Al.
You're so welcome, Al, you do a great job.
No, I don't sleep a lot at night, so sometimes I'll be calling you at like 3:00 in the morning.
It's okay.
What did you read today?
You can call me anytime you want to, I'll help you all I can. I'd be glad to.
So Allen's hiatus before I renominate him next year should be peaceful.
But, and I think Andy will do a good job for us too.
I think you both do.
I just hate to see him not here when we nominate him, but I believe he'll be okay with it.
One more thing, I'd like to welcome our new member.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have we done that yet?
I don't think we did.
I don't think we did. Jeez.
We jumped right into voting on a chair advice here, because you wanted to get out of a hot seat.
Yeah. But this is, I'll introduce yourself to us, please.
Paul Ferris, I'm a recent resident to Parsonsfield, as of last year.
Awesome.
Great. Welcome, welcome.
Glad to have you.
Glad to have you.
Vote to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at this time.
Second. All in favor?
Right.
We're out of here. Can you go off record?